Good evening. It is five thirty PM on Wednesday, December twenty first, two thousand twenty-two in this regular city. Uh, this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are counselors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Jason Welker, Justin Dick, counselor Andy Grot is absent. Uh, will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I'd like to note that we had planned an employee recognition for this evening, but that will be postponed until a future meeting. Are there any announcements from council?
I have an announcement.
Okay.
Um, I just want to give a big shout out to the staff, to Amanda and Holly. We met at the Envision Center on Monday, yesterday. I don't know what day it is. It's been a long week already. Uh, anyway, we about partnering and collaborating on getting volunteers to do snow shoveling for the disabled and the elderly, and it went really, really well. The group came up with the slogan, be a neighbor, help a neighbor, and I think that was really great, and I think the synergy between the two groups is going to be a wonderful thing. So thank you, Amanda and Holly, for bringing that all together, and it was really great.
Staff, any announcements?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, just a couple. Uh, on our website and on our, uh, Facebook page, we've got a link to our committee and commission applications. We have vacancies on, uh, arts, culture, historic preservation, and opening on the Sandpoint Urban Renewal Board as well as Planning and Zoning Commission. So, um, people can get applications either right off that link off of our Facebook page or right off the front page of our website. There's commission applications, I think, is the button on the front page of the website. If anyone is interested in planning and zoning commission, uh, they have to be a resident of the city of Sandpoint. You do not necessarily have to be a city resident for, uh, the SURA or for Arts Culture Historic Preservation, but there is criteria you'll have to fill out for Arts Culture and Historic Preservation. A second announcement, um, we're going into the holidays, holiday season, the end of the year holiday season, and a reminder on closures at City Hall. Um, our offices are open all week this week. We're open on Monday through Friday next week as well. It will be Monday, January second. Our office is enclosed, is closed. Our employees are celebrating the January first holiday celebration is Monday, January second, in terms of an official city holiday. Um, but otherwise, Monday through Friday, we are open through the end of the year.
Appreciate that. Thanks. All right. Um, any other announcements? Okay.
Oh, and this Monday, sorry, excuse me, Monday, the twenty-sixth and Monday, the second.
Appreciate it.
Every other day is eight to five. Um, not holidays, so.
Okay, sounds good. Well, now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the public the opportunity to address myself and council and items on the consent calendar or on any topic that is not listed on the agenda. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and somehow did not have the opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public hearing at the end of our regular agenda. Does not look like we'll have that problem tonight. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign-up form located at the table by the front door. And you would, uh, hand that completed form to the clerk in the front right of the room. Those who, um, are on Zoom and wish to speak, when I ask for public comment, you may raise your hand and the uh, clerk will unmute you. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual organization or business, and public comments are for comments only. Please not direct any questions to council or staff, and please do not approach the dials. Please note that during the public forum, council may not hear or take testimony on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be likely, uh, is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is only allowed during the public hearing. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting, public forum portion of the meeting. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the council may be determined to be inappropriate for public forum as well. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Tone it down, Greg. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public forum this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Hearing none, that concludes the public forum portion of our meeting this evening. Next is the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is one million, four hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, reflecting four hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred seven dollars and eighty-four cents for regular payables and nine hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-one cents for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved.
It moved.
Second, it moved in second. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved. The first item under all business this evening is a presentation on the Travers Park Sports Facilities Improvement Phase. I will now yield the floor to Parks Planning and Development Manager Maeve Nevins Lafftar. Maeve?
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays.
Good luck. Thanks.
Well, this is, um, a little bit of a different project than we've been talking, a different phase than the phase one, and tonight's discussion will be about, um, the Travers Park Sports Facilities Improvement Project. Um, we are kicking this off, and this phase of the project was identified in the park master plan um, as one of the high priorities. Uh, it does include, um, the parking lot expansion that you can see in the concept here. Um, it also includes the field renovations, and what we're looking at on the screen right now is what was identified in the master plan. Um, it also includes the, um, relocation of the existing, um, maintenance building. Yeah, I'm just gonna go back to that. All right, there's a lot of things on my screen right now. This project site is located at Travers Park on the west side, if you're not familiar. And this website that we're looking at right now is the new information page that will be available for the public. Um, currently, we have two hundred thousand dollars allocated towards the, um, matching funds, and we'll be using that as, um, the base match, um, and applying for grants and looking for partnerships. Um, the next grant cycle for the land water conservation grant is coming up in January. It's due at the end of three, that is administered through the Idaho Department of State Parks and Recreation. We do intend to apply for that grant for this project phase. Um, this project concept we're looking at now, and you can see on the screen, um, this is fresh off the press. This is what the, um, proposed concept would look like, and we still have to have our public input phase, um, to really refine this further. We did have about two years of public input on the Travers and Centennial Great Northern um, master plan concept. Um, what you're looking at here is a rendering that has been a result of working in conjunction with phase one, and that's the, um, James E. Russell Sports, uh, Sports Center, the building phase. Um, what we're looking at here is an extension of that. So the two projects would be intended to seamlessly flow together. Um, and in a perfect world, this phase would get developed right after the building phase, but I don't have a crystal ball, and I can't predict the funding yet. Um, we are planning to kick off a survey here. It should be, um, public, uh, by the beginning of next year, so January first, twenty twenty-three, or I should say in a couple of few days, probably. Um, and that survey will focus on specific questions related to the field. So we really want to talk and hear from the sports users that use those fields currently. Um, we're looking for feedback from all sports, sports people, including, um, baseball, softball, um, soccer, lacrosse, anyone that might use that field even for a tournament. Um, we are considering some of the fields being used for multi-use and, and what different fencing structures could look like. We're also considering, um, the turf, if the infield of these fields should be configured for artificial turf. Um, and then, uh, removable or, um, temporary mounds so that you can use a field for baseball and also for softball. So we are continuing this multi-use, um, conversation that has carried over from phase one. Um, we are also looking at, uh, you can see on this plan, uh, it does have the bike park facility to the west that is not included in this phase, but it was shown on this rendering just to give you some scale and show you that that's where the bike facility would be and how it would relate, um, in context to the parking lot. You can see the parking lot. The current parking lot is, um, where my cursor is. It's just that one little area. The expansion would provide anywhere between two hundred and three hundred um, parking spaces. We're still figuring that out because it will be based on, um, the square footage of the building. So we're still figuring, figuring out all of that and, um, looking at how many users will be serving. So, but it just looks to be the approximate square footage of the proposed parking lot. Um, so the timeline is such that you're going to see us again January eighteenth, but, um, you can tell we've been working away. We've actually been working on this, like I said, since before, before I came on board. Um, we've been working on the, uh, analysis and inventory over this fall. I have hired a landscape architecture firm called Mike Terrell, Landscape Architects, and they are the landscape architects also looking phase one, so it's a seamless fit. Um, and Mike's going to be helping me with a public outreach, open house meeting that we're going to have on January fifth, and that meeting's going to be held right here at City Hall. It's going to be an open house, and all are invited to come and review the design and meet the design team and tell us what their thoughts are. Also, you're invited. Everyone is invited to take this, the survey, which we will post live here in a couple of days. Um, and then I will return probably around the January eighteenth meeting with the refined concept, and I'll know the cost at that point, and I'll be able to tell you much more information about the grant application for the land water conservation grant, and I will be at that time seeking, um, support for moving forward with that grant. Um, and then hopefully we'll get funded and we'll be able to build this. We anticipate in most likely twenty twenty-four, depending on funding availability. So um, with that, do you have any questions? I'll go back to the concept.
I'm, I'm sorry, how much is that grant? The conservation?
Match grant fifty percent, and the exact amount is not known yet. It, we will know that in January. Yeah, and the reason we don't know how much we're going to apply for yet is because this concept needs to be refined into a more refined design, and that's where we need the public input. So based on what amenities they want, and, you know, we're looking at a plaza area in the middle that would have bathroom, um, the seating and all of that great kind of the facility amenities. Um, we're also looking at relocating. You can kind of see it here, relocating the existing batting cage. So the cost for the fencing and what do we need? What can we reuse? All those questions still need to be flushed out, um, as well as including the public's input. So yeah, we just don't know enough yet. I'm sorry, but we will soon. We're plugging away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, counsel?
I have a question. Maeve, um, what currently are the sports fields on this footprint? Are we talking about replacing two baseball diamonds and a softball diamond with the same thing, or are there currently soccer fields in here that are?
That's a great question. We, we do have softball and baseball, and then we do use the fields for soccer. Um, they use it specifically for the, um, I forget the name of the tournament. There's a huge tournament, Labor Day.
Ponderay Cup.
Yeah.
Ponderay Cup. Yes, Ponderay Cup. So, um, one of the ideas, for example, was that this outfield has a flexible fence that is removable, and then the Ponderay Cup could use this whole outfield area. So yeah, the, the designers are still working on the configuration, but, um, they have really great experience. They're doing the exact type of facility right now in post-fall, so all the pricing should be current, and, um, I think we have some, some good designers on team for this. So yeah, good question.
Thanks.
All right, uh, any questions from the, or comments from the public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, moving on. The next item is an update on a wastewater treatment plant, followed by council consideration of a resolution pertaining to a possible source of funding. And now you have the floor to Utilities Director Gray Lanning. And we have, uh, Steve James from J U B here.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, it's a special night tonight. I, earlier today, the, the mayor reminded us it's, uh, solstice, right? The, um, shortest day of the year. Or is it the longest night? And I, and, um, let's hope it's not, uh, at least not on my behalf. And, um, we couldn't help but, uh, when you enter the room, you know, we all made it, you know, and, and through a very cold, blustery, wintry day, right? And the talks about temperatures, you know, and, oh geez, I can't remember when it's been so cold. And, um, you know, minus ten or whatever it is, you know, where we're headed. And, um, and if you're not satisfied with that, the actual thermometer reading, then you can go online and figure out what it feels like. You know, and most likely it feels even worse than that. And I always wondered, you know, when did that come into existence? I, you know, do, do you think back in the, the old timers would be talking, you know, remember the blizzard back in nineteen forty-nine, you know, in the snow and walking uphill and all those things, and man, it was cold, and we had to go tend to the stock and stuff. Man, yeah, it was really cold. The other guy says, well, cold, sure, but do you remember the feels like temperature? Then it's like, you know, the rest of the world. I mean, it's just like sensational. I, I mean, it's, I know it's one of the top three topics, right? We can't help ourselves but to talk about the weather, and it's become a little bit of a, you know, uh, joke here at work as well, but, uh, really, you know, the Arctic blast, the polar vortex, it started up in Siberia. I mean, that's, that's where we're in now, right? It roll, it's rolling down, and we're on the tail end of that. And if you're not good with that, that's going to, by the time it gets to Chi- uh, Chicago, it's a, it's a cyclonic bomb. So, uh, you know, I'm not making that. I mean, I, I don't think the old timers were talking about the cyclonic bombs back then, but that's part of the, the discussion these days as well. Do not fly to Chicago this week. I think that's, but I know we're talking about, you know, Jennifer's trying to make it over to Montana and, you know, some areas of that state are known to be the icebox of the, you know, United States, and so good luck and be safe in that. Uh, but this night is, um, it's special for some other reasons. I, I, obviously, it's the eve of these holidays, you know, and that's, that's, that's important, and that's special. Uh, the last meeting of the year for you guys and those. Um, but also I couldn't help but think it's, uh, it's, it's my anniversary also. Uh, about a year ago, you, you hired me, and I'm very proud and honored to be here for that reason, and, uh, um, yeah, and I've enjoyed it. You know, the challenges are like no other, you know, I, it's not, it, it's quite a bit different, and, uh, especially, um, uh, some of the topics, you know, what you're going to hear tonight. These are big topics. But not only a thank you to you folks bringing me here, but, uh, Jennifer and, and her interview team, which included Amanda and Rod. I remember those days just like they were yesterday, and is a very welcoming and, and, uh, really sold me on coming here to try and help and try to be effective. It's a new position, a utilities director. Um, that's important to me, and you've heard this before, where it's a multimillion dollar, uh, venture. Water and sewer is important, and water quality is important, and, uh, I take it seriously, and we try to run it like a business, and we try to act like a business, and that's, uh, those are some of my foundations and my values that you will continue to hear. But, uh, after all of that, uh, tonight's agenda, you know, I got to thinking, what could be more important than what we're going to discuss tonight? At least in my, from my perspective is, how do we fund the wastewater treatment plant? And it's expensive, right? And we've been talking about it for years, this community has. And the other topic that you're going to hear about is, um, uh, the operation of the water system. And, uh, that's, that's entitled challenges and, uh, limitations. And so I, I thought, you know, it, the, the whole apex of being here today, tonight, a year later, and all these other things, including a little bit of the discussion of the weather. So, um, with that, um, we, we call it, uh, the, the wastewater item seven B, uh, plant funding resolution um, is tonight asking council if they'd like to approve applying for uh, state revolving loan funds. Yeah, for the wastewater treatment plant. And council, of course, has heard the condition of the wastewater treatment plant, so this isn't a presentation in, you know, gory detail related to the condition of the plant. But just as a reminder for those viewing and tuning in as well, that, uh, parts of this plant date back to the, the forties, yeah. And parts of those plants are still in service, and even though we've tried to upgrade them over the years, there comes a point where they, they become obsolete. You know, they just simply don't function or they're undersized, et cetera. And so even though we might have our best efforts out of there, these systems in particular, if they fail, uh, could lead to, you know, discharges to the, the river and the lake that, uh, of course, we don't want to do, and then violations of the permit itself. Uh, in the recent past, um, there's, there's a lot of discussion. I, I mentioned, uh, you know, we, the, the plant's been in discussion for a long time, but the recent past uh, includes finding a site finally for the, uh, the, the new water, wastewater treatment plant. We're looking at alternate sites, but of course, that decision has been made now to rebuild the plant at the existing site. Uh, we've also completed a twenty nineteen wastewater treatment plant, uh, facility plan, uh, written authored by J U B and Steve James, who's in the audience, and he'll be helping with the, uh, LOI presentation tonight. And then the permit itself, every five years, we have to apply for a permit for discharging to the river. Uh, we, uh, that is also part of the dynamic. Uh, last summer, we put in our application, so we're currently in the process of having DEQ review the permit for the next five years, uh, requirements for, uh, discharge. You may hear later, uh, one of them, I, I know you're familiar with, is phosphorus and phosphorus removal. And one of our bridge improvements, we call them bridge improvements because we have such an old plant, how do we bridge, you know, uh, these improvements till we get to the new plant? One of the bridge improvements did include, uh, treatment of phosphorus, uh, which is a pump and some chemical, for instance, to keep to our phosphorus limit that we've committed to, which, by the way, was a voluntary phosphorus lower than what was on the permit itself. And I'm good on this community for that. The project budget, uh, you're going to find in the slides to, to, to come as well, or what we anticipate the cost of the plant, I should say, is, uh, the exact number, sixty-four million, four hundred thousand. That's what's in the rate study. And it's a number we pulled out of the, um, uh, the facility plan, the twenty nineteen facility plan, and it's been cost escalated for the time that we do build the plant. So that's why it's at that number, sixty-four four. So for the next few minutes, and you're going to hear about the LOI, Steve has a presentation on it. It's a, like a thirteen-page form. It was part of the package. You could look through that and kind of see some of the questions related to that. It's interesting. You'd think, well, that's, uh, a pretty simple process. Just fill this form out, right, and submit it, and, you know. And what it made us do is, uh, because of the probing questions, the different questions, you know, uh, cost, health, these kinds of things, we really had to look at where we were headed and why, and how much, and phases, or, you know, approach, and this kind of thing. So it really made us step back and, 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 and look at each of these issues, even though it's just one process of, of applying for grants and loans. Two of the things I wanted to mention in particular and to call out, and one is regionalization is on this form. It doesn't score very well. You're going to find in the LOI, you score points, and, uh, Steve will address that as to where we fit in, in potential point scoring when the DEQ looks at it. Regionalization is, you know, can we bring the other sewer plants into, or sewer districts into a regional system? And, um, that's complicated, and it's also been discussed for years. And we all seem to be on kind of different cycles and different phases, you know. I don't know if, uh, regionalization is going to line up necessarily. It's certainly not going to line up by the time we apply for the LOI, which is just next month, as an example. But we wanted to let you know that we're having the discussion on regionalization, uh, with KPSD and Switzer in particular. Um, not too specific to this form or this application, but we are in the process of a wastewater model to model the collection system. And we're looking in the model as to what those inputs look like to our system. Now, be, that'll really inform us, uh, to our collection system and our treatment plant capacity. So, uh, the discussions are happening in terms of regionalization. The other thing you're going to find that we folded into this, it's a little bit awkward in a way, but I know y'all, uh, that have been here a while on council have heard about infiltration and inflow, I and I, the, the extraneous water that gets into the system, that really has an effect on the, the treatment plant and, and the collection system. That too has been considered in the LOI process. And, uh, it doesn't necessarily score directly, but, uh, it has to be part of the discussion. So you're going to find Steve has a presentation and an update on that. We've been studying that over the last two or three years. Uh, he's got some slides and a short presentation on the effects of, uh, I and I. The more we reduce I and I in the collection system, the more we can reduce the size and needs of the plant and save money. And that's why it's, you know, it's the cost of the plant, the size of the plant. That's how it relates back to the LOI itself, the, uh, letter of, uh, interest. With that then, and then finally, in the end of that, that after Steve has his presentation and council configure, uh, or look at the resolution and vote on a resolution then, and all this is tonight is a, is a permission to go forward with submitting the LOI. Steve? Steve, uh, when he's getting, uh, up here and prepared, uh, he, to me, uh, he's got a history, and a, a lot of you will recognize him and have heard presentations from him before with J U B. Uh, in what I've read and know about it, he, he dates back, um, you know, fifteen years or more uh, with having worked with the city of Sandpoint on wastewater, the, the facility plans, the collection systems, and so he's got a just a great, uh, history with us and a great technical knowledge, and we've engaged him also to help us, uh, with the, uh, submittal of the form. The DEQ pretty much expects you to have a contract engineer, you know, helping you with this form as well. So it kind of fits with, uh, uh, the process as well.
Great. It's great to be here. It feels like we've come a long way since two thousand and five. That's when you kind of started down this path. And as you guys all know, there've been lots of bumps along the way. Um, we had a recession in the middle of that, but now it feels like Sandpoint's really got momentum. And so what we'll be talking about is one of those first steps, which is the DEQ letter of interest. There are a whole lot of funding opportunities that you have. Um, the DEQ, what, what, through the, what we call the state revolving loan fund is one of the best funding options out there and has the ability to get some grant money and the amount of money you need to do a project of this size. So we'll talk a little bit through that, and then we'll end that talking about I and I, which I know is everybody's favorite topic. We'll talk a little bit about your recent demonstration project and maybe conclusions that we can draw from that and where we go. There we go. Yeah, it's cold. Everything's moving slowly. So the letter of interest is a DEQ program. It's the first step in the SRF program. All it's saying is you're interested in getting some money. It doesn't have any commitment, uh, for you in the long term. Even if you get the money, you don't have to accept it. But like I said, it's a really good program to use. On the screen in front of you are the six major areas and the major scoring, uh, areas for a letter of interest. The first one of those is public health emergency or hazard, and that is the, those are the biggest points. That's a hundred and fifty out of five hundred and ten points. You don't qualify for. You don't qualify for any of those because you've done a really good job of not contaminating downstream communities. The second one are regulatory compliance issues. That's worth a hundred points. And likewise, your operators have done a really good job over the years of maintaining the system. So you have very, very few regulatory compliance issues. So right off the bat. I guess I'm trying to set your expectations a little bit lower. You don't qualify for some of the big points. You do qualify for a number of the remaining points. Watershed restoration by improving downstream water quality. You qualify for those points in preventing impacts to beneficial uses. Really, that's how you. Maintain good quality downstream watershed. You do qualify for those. Sustainability infrastructure efforts, things like reducing energy usage and making the plant more efficient. And then affordability is a fairly big one for the city. The cost of this project is huge for a community this size. I know you guys are all aware of that. That's tough, but it also provides the ability to get some what we call hardship. Funding. It's really a loan forgiveness program. So you then you don't have to pay the full amount back. So those are the points in a nutshell. Right now, your current score is a hundred and eighty to two hundred points out of that five hundred and ten. To be in the ideal funding range, you need to be between two hundred and fifty and three hundred points. So what we're doing with Greg and Jennifer and Amanda is working through. How we can get more points on this on the sheet. Again, the way that the points are set up don't necessarily benefit a. City that's done a good job of maintaining your system over time. So we had, we've had a couple of meetings with the E Q, the Department of Environmental Quality, who does this, to find ways to make those points. Work out better for a community like Sandpoint.
Steve, can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Of course.
If you go back to that first slide where you showed the six category, point category. So you say that we don't score in the public health emergency or hazard category or compliance. But the city has had some. Some violations with in in stormwater events. Can you explain how those don't qualify?
Yeah, great, great question. So you do get some points for regulatory compliance. The public health emergency or hazard is an immediate hazard to really to public. And that happens when. Typically, you on a waterside where your well goes dry or you have really something catastrophic. Could be accessible or something that has immediate public damage. So you don't have any any points there. Regulatory compliance, you do have some minor permit excursions. And so that scores you twenty five out of a hundred points. To get the rest of it, you really have to have enforcement action from EPA or D Q. So you would have to be at the point where you were doing so much damage downstream or with your treatment plant. That you would be able to get a, you'd end up with a compliance schedule, you'd be fine, and you could get those remaining seventy five points. Great question. That answer that?
I think, Mr. Mayor, if I can interject to. Steve rightfully is giving you the picture of a conservative approach and typical funding rounds. And we have to be realistic about our expectations. But with that balanced in these current times with. The infrastructure that funding that is flowing, the budget surpluses that are occurring in our state. I think it's important to note for the council and the public that we have actively engaged. And D E Q in several conversations about this and not just the D E Q. Regional administrator, but we've also engaged the governor's office in discussions. So the governor's representative for North Idaho. Jake Garringer has been up here several times, and the last time was yesterday to have a conversation with city staff. And the mayor about funding opportunities and our timing relative to submitting this application for. S R F loans. So we are engaging at that level at the political level as well. And looking at how we can maximize. Funding that's coming down and get on the radar relative to the funding needs and the affordability of this project for our community. So. We believe that this is the time to pursue this moving forward to come in with a full ask, and we were encouraged by. D E Q and the governor's office to submit for what our full needs are instead of. What traditionally may have been a more phased approach based on availability of funding. So it's out there. It's on the radar in terms of what our needs. For our community are.
Yeah, well said. And I think that's a big part of it. We're going through strictly the points that you would normally see, but there are lots of ways to get extra funding. And Jennifer's right, the. The the ARPA money that just came out, some of the Idaho budget surplus gives new opportunities there. So by pushing forward at this point, you're really opening up the opportunity for some of that. I want to talk briefly through schedule. We can talk in any detail you want about this, but I want to at least give you an overview. As Greg said, the letter of interest is due on January thirteenth of twenty three. Then if that, if you get awarded funding, that would come in midsummer of twenty three. That allows you enough time then to work forward to understand maybe how much. How much grant funding you would get out of this to decide what your full funding funding package might look like. And then if you, if you ideally get funded this year, then you would move into design and construction twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. And then wrapping up somewhere in twenty six or twenty seven. It really depends, though, on how the how this application scores. You may end up not getting funded in twenty three and instead getting funded in twenty four. So they're. Doing any funding application like this, you're you're putting your best foot forward. You're getting the process started. Sometimes you have to do it a couple of times to get to that point where you actually get the project funded. So I don't want to set unrealistic expectations here, but by moving forward, doing all the right things to get funded.
The other element with here that we don't have specifically on that slide because it remains to be seen where we fall in the funding cycle. And if we fall high enough in the funding cycle, but. Or any loan funding, if there's bonding that becomes a portion of any of this. That will help to go out to a public vote as well. So. And at this point, we haven't moved forward with a. With a vote on any funding for the wastewater treatment plant till we have pursued all of our different avenues. And tried to leverage everything we can to minimize the amount that we have to borrow. Either through a a loan through the revolving loan fund or by going to the bond market ourselves. So. Just so there isn't a surprise, that will be an element at some point in this cycle too, and we'll know more this spring.
Yeah, and that's perfect segue to this because there, when you do the bond, you want to get that bond down as low as you can get it. But in the funding application, you want to ask for all the money you think you need at this point. And it it it. You you have to go after funding to find out how much grant you have, determine how much. Loan you need or how much your bond needs to be. Once you get the bond in place, then you can also go after additional funding. So. This is not a one stop process. You'll kind of keep going through it a couple of times to try to maximize your grant money. So the the amount of money that Greg noted is in the rate study is sixty four point four million. We've rounded up to sixty five here. And that gives you a capacity about eight million gallons a day at the treatment plant. All of these numbers are really in flux because you've got. Everybody's dealt with supply chain inflation. So these are just estimates of where it might be today. But the idea is to get to as close to the right number as we can in front of D E Q so they can fund that project.
Yeah, quick question. What's our, excuse me, what's our current capacity in gallons per day?
It depends how you can. So in order to do full biological treatment, which this envisions, you've got a capacity of between four and five million gallons a day. And that is really technically the plant is limited more like four million gallons a day. But your operators have have got ways that they can make squeeze just a little bit more out of that. So they've.
The image of squeezing a little more out of the sewage treatment plant is a good one. Thank you.
We stretch.
Sorry.
Stretch as far as we can.
Thanks.
Yeah, great question. So I want to talk just a little bit about I and I, and then we can circle back to the L O I. We can try to use as many I's as we can today. So the part of the driver of all this back in two thousand and five was your peak flow. And I think a lot of you have seen this slide before. We keep bringing it back. When we started the facility plan back in two thousand and seventeen, the maximum flow into the treatment plant was about ten point. Five million gallons a day or so. So if you contrast that with the actual amount of of wastewater that people produce. Our average dry day, so when we don't have rain, we've got about one point one million gallons a day coming in. Truly, people only generate about seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. So when you get to that, that ten point five is a whole bunch of clean water coming down the system. This, we've, we've kind of calculated that if 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 you didn't have any of that clean water coming down. The excess flow would be about sixty five thousand people in Sandpoint. So obviously, just put in perspective, you have a huge amount of clean water coming down the system.
And another way of. Maybe almost a metaphor, I I think I believe Coeur d'Alene has a ten million. Gallon a day plant, is that right?
Six.
Six, okay, so. And they've, and they're about sixty five thousand plus, imagine in their system.
Yeah, so it's pretty amazing the difference between where all that, all that. I shouldn't call it clean water. It's really extremely large groundwater. And this slide shows a little bit about where it comes from. We've got two different components. We have the main lines or the lines the city owns. And those are the mains in the street. And you can get leaks and manholes or in pipelines. And then you also have the private side, which are roof drains off commercial buildings. It can be cracks and sewer lines. And one of the big issues in Sandpoint may be sump pumps. So any kind of clean water or groundwater that comes in. So we've known that's been an issue. Just an example, this is kind of what happens in system. On just a normal rainy day, you'll see the flows go along, and that's mostly what we see on the left hand side. And then a little rainfall event can cause that big spike that is highlighted in blue. And the response is pretty dramatic for some of that. As soon as it rains, you get flow at the plant. But then we see something else too. So it spikes, but then the flow kind of drops down slowly. And that's from water in the ground that has been sitting there and slowly seeps into the system. So we wanted to look a little bit at. An overall approach to dealing with I and I. This is from two thousand and five to present. You identified back then that I and I was an issue in flow and infiltration. So we determined the source. We did smoke testing where we actually put smoke in the system, some of you may remember. And we look for places that smoke comes out. That's the same where the holes are. Then we try to quantify that. And we do flow monitoring to see what that looks like. We do something else called R D I I, which is rainfall derived inflow and infiltration. We want to know. When it rains, what the impact is. And we'll talk about a little bit of that tonight. And then you've implied implemented a bunch of improvement projects. The pipe rehab project started back in two thousand and eight. And I know, Deb, you've been involved in a lot of this stuff along the way. You've spent about six million dollars on those rehab projects. And they've really started to see, I think you're seeing a benefit from that. You also did downtown project where you disconnected some roof drains and some of the work down there. And then most recently, we did this private lateral demonstration project. Question was, if we, if we do work on the private side, how much of that flow can we cut? And then once we have done those, then we circle back and we say, okay, let's reflow monitor, see how much dropped and do our analysis again. So this is a very brief overview of what some of those results are. So just to jump to the punchline in your demonstration project. And for those of you who weren't here, demonstration project took two different basins. One that were very similar, one down by Superior and Fourth, and the other up by Lavina and Marion, that area. We did the improvements to Lavina Marion to look what the improvement was. And it looked like by replacing that, we were able to cut about a hundred and sixty thousand gallons out. At a cost of right, eight hundred thousand dollars. It's about four, about five dollars a gallon removed. So that's pretty good. You're getting some benefit there. That's also around the cost of what this treatment upgrade is going to be, maybe a little bit less. But it was one of the worst parts of the system. So we kind of, we cherry picked what we thought would be an easy one to work with. So we could see what the 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 maximum benefit was. So let's walk through just a little bit about what that looks like. Before we did the project, the top graph is in twenty twenty. And we've circled the peak flow. So we had. If you look at the blue bars down below, I don't know if I have a, oh, yeah, right there. We have the blue bars. Those are rainfall. So when we had rain, a significant amount of rain. And then we had some melting. We saw that big peak in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty two, we had something very similar. We had, after we finished the project, we had this big rainfall event. And the flows of the treatment plant went up, but you'll notice we didn't see the peak in the demonstration basin. So. The orange is demonstration. We didn't see that same peak that we saw back in twenty twenty. Can everybody see that? That difference. So really, what we've been able to do by doing that project is cut some of this big peak out right there and flatten it out a little bit.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, could you just describe once again what the what the change was you did in that demonstration basin? That explains this reduction and the, what was the change you did of that fourth and superior location?
Great question. So and we've got a side that talks about that, but it really what we did was, we looked at. So most of lining projects have looked at the main line, the city owned. And in this case, we know we have two, two major factors on the private side. They are the sewer laterals, so the line that runs from the city sewer out to the house. And and then anything that's within the house. And so that can be some pumps or foundation drains. In Sandpoint, you have something unique. In my experience, people call them yard drains. They, when the yard floods, they actually pop their clean out and they drain their whole yard into the sewer. And so that's part of where that comes from. So the sump pumps, foundation drains and the yard drains, there's not much we can do because they're on private, they're within the house. This project looked at what happens if we just replace from five feet outside of the house to the main line, including the connection to the main line. Does that make sense? So just kind of that, not the main line, not within the house, but everything in between.
So so that reduction, what does that tell you? I mean, what what's going on in the rest of Sandpoint? Are those pipes just leaky? Then the rest of Sandpoint, so just the city replacing that, what, twenty, twenty five feet of pipe? Between the main line and house reduced these peak I and I flows by the significance.
Yeah, by by some amount. And it's it's variable because the different weather events. But let's say we reduced it by twenty percent. That that tells you that if you went through the entire system and replaced those, you might get a twenty percent reduction across the board. One of the problems at Sandpoint is it's kind of death by a thousand cuts. You have. Not just the sump pumps, foundation drains, not just roof drains, not just these laterals that go out, not just your main lines. You have it kind of all the way through the system. And Sandpoint really is in a tough spot, a tough location because your soils here are very silty and fine. You hold a lot of groundwater, adding to that the age of the system, you get a lot of water coming from almost everywhere. So you can knock off little areas like this, and that helps. But a comprehensive project throughout the city would be cost prohibitive. We've got a couple more thought. If I can go through a couple more, then let me know if we could circle back to that. Really, it's a perfect storm. To take Greg's metaphor here. What we really see is there are three things that happen when we get, when we get these big flows. Number one, we've got a lot of snow on the ground. Number two, we get this warming trend. And number three, we get rain on top of that. So the, we call them pineapple express or whatever that is. We get them in January and sometimes in March. And that that rain falls on the snow, it melts the snow and it goes right into any nook and cranny that you've got in the system. Because of that, just the weather condition, the soils you have, you're never going to be able to get rid of all the I and I, or it would be very difficult. And some of that isn't fixable, but some parts of it are. So as we talk about that five dollar gallon that we remove, it's for those key areas where we've got the the laterals. This is, I think, maybe a slide that helps answer your question. We saw in twenty twenty about ninety percent of the maximum flow was from I and I. In twenty twenty two, that dropped to seventy four percent. If we could, if we could implement that citywide, you cut your flows by another million and a half gallons a day. Which is, doesn't sound like a lot when you have nine or ten million, but it's really a significant cut. And it makes a big difference at treatment plant.
Is this just within the project area then?
Just within the project area. Yeah, it'd be nice. I'd love to be able to say that.
Projects cut down, yeah, interesting.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a question. So with all of the. Houses turning over like in South Sandpoint, the new buyers and stuff, and they're required to change their lateral, right? The buyer or the seller, has that been helping too? I mean, I see the little patches all over the south side where you know their lateral's been fixed. So is that helping the city or?
Yeah, that is, in my opinion, that's a slip program. The sewer lateral sewer lateral improvement program.
Right.
And it is one of the most effective things, I think, Sandpoint is. And it is one of the most effective things I think Sandpoint has done. Because you're really starting to address this issue of private laterals. And the way that works is, uh, at the time of sale, roughly Greg will correct me if I go wrong here. Um, the, the s- somebody buyer sellers required to, to video the line. And if it doesn't meet, uh, criterion for, for high enough quality, then it gets replaced.
Or if your house is a hundred and ten years old and your sewer fails. Which happened to us.
Those might happen earlier. Um, and but, so that's a very important program because little by little you're picking those off. You've got roughly. What would you say Greg, forty-five hundred laterals in city? And, and you've replaced about three or four hundred to that program. So little by little, you're working your way through the whole system. And then this project did another hundred and four, so little by little, you're getting those numbers taken care of. So you, this perfect lead into what I want to talk about next is, we know from demonstration bot project that we were able to reduce peak flows. We know there's no single source by night, it comes from all over the place. It really is weather dependent, so the best thing you could do is put an umbrella over Sandpoint and you solve a lot of this problem.
How much did that cost?
I've never actually been hosted one before. Um, but you know, anything that keeps the water out would be helpful. We know that reducing INI is going to be an important part of your future, it's going to require ongoing investment. And Greg tells me that the new rate study you have includes some money for INI, I think that's essential on the city side main line. Uh, you're going to continue doing some flow monitoring to see how, how your flows are improving over time. And then just as you mentioned, the slip program is a big part of that. Uh, I think continuing to make that better and learning from what you've learned there is going to be important. The next pieces are going to be focusing on additional private sources. That's some pumps, foundation drains and yard drains and roof drains. That's not something that the city's really been able to tackle. In fact, no city in the country really has got that figured out. But as, as an industry, working hard to get those taken care of. So if we can focus on that down the road, that is all going to make a big impact over the long term. Now that's, you know, you're talking twenty, thirty years of constant effort to get to that point. But you have to remember, it took a hundred years to get to where we are today.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question, just relative to the yard drains and the sump pumps and. Our building codes, are those things illegal now to? Okay, so we're not allowing that in any new building, okay.
Yeah, your sewer ordinances don't allow any of that, um, the yard drains are effectively. Um, they're just a clean out, which you do require, and it's just somebody taking the top off. The sump pumps are, uh, illegal, but where people have flooding basements, they. Even when they've been removed, people have put them back in because they don't think they have an option. And then foundation drains aren't, they're not in common practice now, but, uh, back especially in the. Turn of the century, well, turn of the nineteen, twentieth century through maybe nineteen fifty. They were put around houses and draining the sewer and they're hard to find because there is no pump, they just actively drain. So you've got lots of pieces there that are a little bit hard to track down, but they are illegal.
Okay, so education ultimately is.
Education's a big part of all of this, and I think Sandpoint, um, you are a council that knows more about INI than most councils out there. And I think your, your, uh, rate payers know a lot about INI because of what you've done in the last, what are we now, eighteen years or so? So it's, you're getting there, it just takes time.
I have a very basic question for you. So if we're draining up to eight million gallons through INI or seven million gallons on peak days. And we are implementing all these efforts to reduce that INI flow. The water doesn't just disappear or evaporate, where, where does it go? If it's not going into the sewer system, are we just talking about people have wetter basements, people have wetter yards? And we all, right now, the city's bearing the cost of. You know, leaky pipes on private property. Uh, but the benefit to the household is that there's less flooding in people's basements and yards. Which seems like if we cut off that flow into the wastewater system, don't we just see more flooding of people's private property?
That's, that's a great question, and that is one, that's part of the outcome of cutting INI, that water has to go somewhere. Um, I guess I've got two thoughts, or one, really, this is more stormwater and should be going through the stormwater system. And I know that's a can of worms too, and most stormwater systems aren't designed for that. But the real problem with sending it down to a wastewater treatment plant is. Treatment plants do best when they have lots of food coming in. And if it's really dilute, your effluent quality really drops. So if you can take the water and send it away separately and take your biological waste and treat that. That's a much better way to handle it. Some of that water could be handled on the surface, you don't necessarily need to pipe stormwater. But Sandpoint has got, the way Sandpoint was developed over the years with streets that were raised. You've ended up kind of gritting the city so that they're end up with bathtubs in different places. So your, your point is really well taken, getting that fixed is going to be difficult. It's still, I think, better for the environment for, especially the, the residents. Because the cost of a treatment plant is much higher, you're better off to reduce or divert that water somewhere else, but it does have to be taken care of. Did I answer your earlier question about the value of the, of removing the lateral water?
Yes, yeah, the, the, the number that sticks out to me is the five dollars per gallon. Yeah, as far as like what it would cost to reduce INI via that method, is that an important number for us to keep in mind?
It is important and remembering that, like I say, we cherry picked what we thought might be one of the worst neighborhoods. So realistically, in the rest of town, that number might be lower.
And it was that the, the fourth and superior neighborhood?
It was actually the Levina Marion. That area up there.
That's the worst part of town, you think?
It was, now it's better.
Okay, how many laterals did you replace in that project?
Hundred?
A hundred and four.
Hundred and four, and that was at the city's expense then?
It was, yeah, and it wasn't full lateral replacement. Um, uh, and Holly Ellis from the engineering department really deserves a lot of credit here. Uh, they dug into the length of laterals and what needed to be replaced. And actually took sections, so it didn't do the whole thing blindly, they just did what needed to be done. Some folks actually had replaced their lateral and so didn't need to be done. So it was really trying to, trying to target what the worst parts were.
And may I ask a question about the slip program, is that program at the owner's expense or is the city supporting the replacement of laterals through that program?
That's a homeowner's expense.
Okay, what, what, roughly what does it cost to replace a lateral? I have absolutely no idea. Is that right? Is that, is that about right?
That's what it cost us.
Interesting.
And how long is your slip?
From the house to the, out in the middle of the street.
I did want to say, go, so do one more shout out to Rod Brigette and his team. Uh, they've been fighting this INI battle for, uh, well, the whole time I've been around, so seventeen years or so. And they have really, we think they've really cut flows, when I first started working here, Sandpoint had fifteen MGD peaks. And now you're down to, we think, maybe eight or nine? Less than eight, so we are seeing some improvement and Sandpoint is a, it's a war of attrition, you just. You try to plug a hole and it's going to come in somewhere else, so you just keep plugging holes as much as you can.
Steve, can you address the diminishing returns that we've discussed around? Um, you know, we can, we could keep investing in, in reducing that INI, but at some point, we just aren't getting the same kind of benefit. That we have gotten historically and you kind of address it with this, with this demonstration project, but. Um, but can you speak to that and how that relates to, um? You know, the cost of, of building a new plant and, and having to kind of weigh that, how, how we make that investment?
Yeah, great question, and, and really with INI, like I said, you, you fight. You, you pick off the, the, the highest flow areas first, that's a low hanging fruit. And that costs less than as you work through the system and. You get less and less return for more and more money spent. And we're really, I think on the main line, what Rod and his crew have done, really identify the major, major. Issues, we think, there's some other ones, truly what may be happening is when it rains, you've got the, the, the snowbanks. The rain falls on that, and especially in Sandpoint, you end up with just the road in the middle. And that water just ponds on the street and it has to find a way in. So it can find its way in through holes and manholes and all kinds of things. So that, picking up that, those sorts of things is really difficult, takes a lot of time and energy. And at some point, you're just better off treating the water. Uh, the goal would be to get the flows from the treatment plant down or those to the treatment plant down a little bit more. So you're treating mostly wastewater and less rainwater, but you're absolutely right. At some point, you keep throwing a lot of money in and you just don't get the return from it.
So if we're envisioning an eight million gallon a day plant. How, what should be our target for INI? Uh, when, when do we feel like we're starting to get there and knowing that, you know, we have to accommodate future growth and? Do we want to get down to, to six on, on those peak days or what, what would you see as a, a target that we should shoot for?
Oh, that's a great, I've been asked that question a lot of times and I would love to give you an absolute answer. I think really the issue here is cutting those flows down as much as you can as a goal. If the, if you design for an eight MGD plant. Then during the peaks, you have the hydraulic capacity to get it through, because the worst thing you can do is undersize a plant and have water flowing out. You know, with nowhere to go. Um, incidentally, back in two thousand five with that storm, there were manholes that were exploding all through town and wastewater was flowing out across the street. If you can get that flow, the more you get it down, the more it gives you the opportunity to do other things. Like Greg talked a little bit about regionalization or, um. It gives you the ability to optimize your treatment a little bit better. Uh, perhaps it gives you more capacity for growth, I know that's not always positive, but it, it gives you lots of flexibility. So cutting that flow at that, we think eight MGD is, is easily achievable. We're seeing that right now. Ideally, six MGD would be where I'd like to see the peaks come in. I think that's achievable without spending too much money, but it's going to take a lot of effort. Great question.
Any other questions, counsel? All right, uh, thank you, Steve, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, good to be here again.
Are there any members from the public that would like to comment on this issue? Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for submission of a letter of interest for funding. From the state of Idaho for the wastewater treatment plan, is there a motion? It moved in seconded and for the record, that could also be called a letter of in- interest. Or intent, just saying, okay, it's been moved in seconded, any further discussion? This will be your roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spur?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, council will consider adoption of the water system master plan, I'll now yield the floor to Utilities Director Greg Lanning, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um. Went offline here, so I'm trying to find my PowerPoint as well. Did I mention atmospheric rivers?
That's a good one.
It is, you go back to that old group, you know, forty-nine and they're sitting there, you can see a Far Side cartoon with that one, right? Oh, I don't know, did you remember the, the atmospheric river from, uh, nineteen forty-nine, you know, and they're looking up there and they're. I sure hope it stays up there, you know, because if it comes down, it could be bad. But by Monday, we might be right there, um, it was perfect storm, like. Uh, warming and, you know, I don't know, quite a bit of rain. Coming just next week, uh, on top of this snow. Stay tuned. The, uh, next two topics are tied together and I have, uh. One PowerPoint that, uh, addresses both of them, so we'll get through the first few slides and then, uh. Transition into the, the next topic after that, the, um. Am I sharing with you, okay? Thank you, Melissa. Yeah, the first one then being the adoption of the. Water master plan. And there's a action item at the end of this one. Uh, I tried to make this one succinct. In, uh, twenty, it's the, uh, twenty twenty-one water master, water system master plan. It was authorized, uh, in February, uh, twenty nineteen. Uh, presented February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one to council. Um, and then, uh, at that time, council said, hey, it looks good, uh, please send on to DEQ for approval, which is part of the process. The EQ took a look at it and then August twenty-four sent it back to us, approved. And so that's where we're at in this point in time, uh, related to this council action item. Uh, not much changes and I'll address that in terms of the DEQ questions and comments, but everything else is, uh. Uh, remain the same in the master plan, no major changes. But to that end, uh, I just went through, uh, a few slides, uh, and this will be quick, uh, to review such an important document. It took so much time and, uh, several pages later. Uh, the, the entire document was uploaded, it was part of the council packet as well. And then, um, it too will be available, uh, on the website. It, uh, looked at, uh, these are the chapters essentially, or at least the major, uh, portions of the, the system that I looked at, the existing system. Uh, looked at future requirements, water quality. Um, we developed a model in this one, which is really important because we still use it today to analyze and you'll see that in the next segment. Related to some of the challenges and limitations in the water system, the model really helps us with that. Um, and then ultimately end in, in some project recommendations, which, uh, then were uploaded, uh, into the, the rate plan. Here to go into this, this, by the way, I borrowed slides, uh, that you saw, if you were on council at that time, at that time. From a presentation from Murray Smith, the consultant that prepared the plan. Um, it talks a little bit about the, uh, uh, you know, the, the extent of the system, ninety-two miles of pipe. To, uh, to water treatment plants. That drawing, by the way, is a, is the pressure zones and, uh, kind of, you know, the, kind of the, the nerdy side of how the system works. And how water gets moved around in the system. It is, the water system, uh, our public water utility serves not only, uh, Sandpoint, but. Um, uh, other areas, including wholesale areas such as Northside and. Adalwise, Saranga, but also the cities of, uh, Fond du Rhé and Cootney, as well as some of the incorporated areas in the county. Average day is a couple million gallons a day. And can peak around, uh, you know, four to five million gallons on a real hot summer day. This is a repeat of what I just, you know, uh, how we use the model, uh, to identify deficiencies. And propose projects, uh, this is a, a, again, a slide that was presented earlier, but. These, uh, the picture on the left is, uh, actually what the model looks like and it, it has all these individual nodes and. And zones that we look at, uh, blue, yellow, pink and, um, each of those nodes then becomes part of the, the model. And, um, uh. We determine, you know, failure of the system at those nodes and that it helps us, informs us and make these decisions. At the end, of course, was this, uh, capital improvement project and it also included this, uh, not only this map, but, uh, several pages of. Projects that we need, uh, according to this master plan. Um, and, uh, descriptions, extent, and then, uh. The red ones in this case being the ones of priority projects, uh, one to five years. Those came in a, in a bundle, you know, uh, uh, recommended for these five years. We took them then and just distributed them over the next five years, uh, you know. Uh, because the question's been asked, you know, how do you prioritize projects? You know, it's based on condition, hydraulic flow, these kinds of things that are derived from this plan and these models. Um, then we pull them apart to, you know, put them in individual years, trying to equal about. Um, then we pull them apart to, you know, put them in individual years, trying to equal about, you know, two million dollars in capital improvements in this case, over a period of twenty years. Uh, the rate study itself has a twenty-year plan in it, but you know, really focuses on near term, you know, one to five years. And then especially next year's projects. And so the point here is this master plan absolutely informed the rate study and we used it uh, one hundred percent to do that in terms of these projects and the cost of those projects. That was quick. That was your hundred and
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, babe, thank you. Um, digested into five minutes. Um, but for reason, you know, the, I didn't want to necessarily repeat anything that you'd seen before. The other thing is um, the uh, uh, the last time you saw it, there weren't any substantive changes to the plan. And then I promised you I was gonna talk about the two comments from DEQ because that is the only thing that changed. Um, I found it in my notes, it would say something like, um, it was technical in nature. It says, uh, in the Woodland Booster Station, criteria requires you to take uh, the largest pump out of service and what's its effect on the system. Yeah, that was question number one from DEQ. The second one was very similar at the uh, Lake Water Treatment Plant. What happens when you take one system out? You still have the ability to provide uh, the flows that are required. And the answer to both of those is yes, we took care of that and we responded uh, via our consultant to the DEQ. DEQ was satisfied with that and then sent back their approval.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. Um, I really found the report fascinating. I mean, I'm a nerd. I read it all and learned so much about, you know, the, uh, the whole entire system. So I really appreciated the, the depth and, and a lot of common language, except for the chemistry part, but you know, otherwise. So I really highly commend you. It was, it was a good report. And I highly encourage the public and the community to read it if they want to know what's going on with, you know, all of the systems, the, the infrastructure. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions from counsel? All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And that concludes that item. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh. Counsel, uh, resolution.
Let's adopt it.
Action.
Oh yeah, let's do that. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
How about this? I didn't entertain a motion to approve the resolution for adoption of the water system match, master plan.
They're moved.
Second.
They moved in second and is there any discussion? So be a real call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Booker?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Sorry, I got ahead of myself there. Um, next is a presentation on the challenges and limitations of the city's water system. And I then yield the floor to Utilities Director Greg Lanning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This one is um, uh, you, you, not only in your council packet, uh, you have a council report. It's a, it's a brief report that uh, a one page describing generally what this topic's about. Uh, but also included in there are displays related to, we'll, we'll see our fire flow deficiencies identified in the master plan. And uh, what I have termed a, a blue line, you know, it's a line we've driven or drawn on a map to kind of show where the pressure of uh, we have pressure challenges in the system and limitations. So that's, that's part of the title in this uh, report as well. This is a, a report only and uh, I'm gonna, a little bit of a spoiler alert, uh, I'm gonna get to the end and we're gonna go like, well, gee, you know, where are we going from here? Um, and there isn't, we'll, we'll discuss it. Uh, but not a whole lot of definitive answers, uh, at least for me at this point. Uh, but it's an important discussion. It's one, I talk about the year that I've been here. Um, this is um, uh, when I first got here, it, it had to do with, you know, I thought, how cool is this? I got, I got a, a job and I got these instruction manuals, you know, uh, sitting on my desk. And it's gotta be easy, just open the book that you mentioned and, and read about it and do what it says in the book. And um, it's been a little bit different than that.
Yeah.
Um, but uh, the uh, the, the, the master plan itself certainly was interesting and it informed me technically. And, and I could look at the physical system and, and uh, you know, come up with ways to answer some of the questions. Uh, and so I'm telling this story uh, in, in the year that I've been here because that's kind of how it evolved. Because midsummer then, of course, the other reason, uh, one of the other reasons you brought me here was to help with the rate study, uh, you know, ten years in the making and been real proud of being part of that as well. And I already mentioned how we upload these capital projects in particular to the rate study. Uh, same, it should be almost a plug and play process and for capital, it, it really was, it was okay. But we learned a lot during the capital uh, planning process and you've heard a couple of discussions related to capital. What was interesting about this is what we then um, you, you saw on the, the, the one diagram and you'll see this diagram again, that master plan display that shows all these projects. There are projects that lie without, outside of the boundaries of the city of Sandpoint. And that was kind of one of the first flags that went up and you heard me at that time come back with the term that I call jurisdictional capital. How do the citizens, citizens of Sandpoint, especially if we have to bond and finance for it, vote for a bond for a project that is outside of their jurisdiction? That uh, that became quite a discussion related to uh, well, shoot, just go look up the agreement or it must be a water district, just do what you normally do. Wasn't quite the, the case. And so we'll have a little bit of a discussion on that jurisdictional issue related to operating the water system. Uh, and that's uh, so it, it's a process that just kind of kept building on itself. Uh, and you'll see these kind of these in these headlines. Uh, uh, when I, I got here, uh, we, we, we reviewed developments and this one is out in the northeast. It's outside of the uh, uh, city of Sandpoint boundaries. This is up in uh, Ponderay. We had uh, one development come in and we do this, by the way, as a matter of course, we've done it for years. Review these developments, they ask for water. Uh, we then say, yes, we can provide water and, and, and we uh, provide a letter that's called a will serve. We will serve what? One developer came in and it was okay. We, we ran the model on it. And then right across, not very far in proximity, was this other development that came back not okay, did not have enough water pressure uh, to provide fire flow, which is one of the minimum requirements. Uh, under fire flow conditions, we impose a, we impose a fire flow demand, given that type of development. And if it cannot meet a minimum pressure of twenty PSI, then you cannot or should not extend the water system.
Good question, Greg. In, in this report, I read both PSI and gallons per minute for fire flow?
Yes.
It, it, how should, what should we be paying attention to there? Cause you've got a map that says like twenty-five hundred gallons per minute or a thousand gallons per minute at a particular location, but you're now talking about PSI is what, what, what should we be thinking about in terms of fire flow?
Yeah, you, the um, you, you'll find that the answer is both. And um, and it's Bernoulli's equation.
Okay, okay, that's enough.
We want a props. We want a prop.
So.
Very related and you know that, uh, you, you know, you're out there watering your lawn and you know, somebody flushes the toilet and you know, and then the pressure and flow goes down in your hose uh, for watering your lawn. And that's a big, uh, they're very related, but in a lot of cases they're not. And so uh, you'll see there is a little bit of a distinction and I, as I, I'll get to those as a matter of fact in these slides. So that's the difference between the blue line and the fire flow deficiencies.
Okay.
Um, so given that real discreet look at that one example, I just, you know, uh, Jennifer came in and she was getting tired of, not tired of it, but she says, come on, you keep talking about, you know, these problems out there. And I said, well, it's some kind of boundary. And she says, well, draw the, I mean, what are you talking about? I, and so she, I, I drew this blue line, it was back in April and um, and you can see I used a, a mouse and a, you know, and a little marker on for PDFs and drew a blue line and it's, it's what I've used since. It, it's not really precise, but it can't be in a lot of ways. But it, it, it's also an important blue line for just the discussion.
Right.
Um, you know, so please don't, you know, it's a model and you can hear all these things about models or they're good for general, you know, conclusions, but not real precise work. Even though we're still using it for very precise work on one offs for development, uh, you know, they pay for that, by the way, and I'll get to that also, right? At a cost, we can drill down farther to determine if the fire flow and pressure conditions are okay. But that's how the blue line evolved. Now you can sell those projects. Just uh, before I leave this slide, there's, there's one large project, uh, it's P seventeen labeled on here. Um, there's a mouse, it, there it is. P seventeen's right here. The major pipeline, I think, an eighteen inch diameter pipeline, nearly a mile long, two and a half million dollars. It's a, it's a big project that could really help with all of these issues out in the northeast quadrant. Uh, uh, if, if this project were constructed, the brand new water line to provide uh, water to this area. Then companion document also in your, your package is this fire flow deficiencies. This uh, council member was uh, these uh, this uh, the fire flow, so the, the blue line is pressure. That's when you impose these uh, demands, these gallons per minute demands, and then pressure drops below twenty PSI. That's the blue line is the pressure line. And then these nodes don't quite qual- follow the same pressure line. Uh, and there's more to that and I won't necessarily go into that, but this is one of the displays in the master plan. Really identified these fire flow deficiencies. This one does give gallons per minute. Uh, they, and those nodes, again, you see in the model, the blue nodes, the yellow modes. Um, those are um, the demands that you put on those to, you know, for fire flow, anywhere from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. Uh, there's a residential flow, you know, fifteen hundred, which is a lot less in gallons per minute than a commercial flow or lignetics. Holy cow, that big sand pile or a sawdust pile out there. Thirty-five hundred gallons per minute is the demand flow for that in, in gallons per minute. Uh, huge demand and, and so we put one fire at lignetics and it shows up red, danger, danger. You know, we don't have the water and the pressure to fight fires out there. That's a, that's a great example of one we all know and drive by. But also it did, it identified uh, uh, fire flow deficiencies within the city of Sandpoint. These are kind of geographical. Uh, we don't have very many lines, um, you know, crossing railroad tracks that's difficult to get through or under uh, Sand Creek itself, you know, there, you can look at, if you just look at the water system, you'd only see a few pipes crossing those areas. And because we're down to just a few pipes, there are restrictions to how much water can get through there in large quantities or gallons per minute. So there are deficiencies within um, the city as well. And so, you know, those two together, you can kind of see how those projects then start appearing, you know, to, to kind of alleviate those uh, those issues related to fire flow.
And, and just to be clear, um, so when we're looking at the bubble map, um, and it says, uh, let's say it's a red dot, it says twenty-five hundred. That means that the, that the deficiency at that site is at least twenty-five hundred gallons uh, per minute, less than it should be by fire code to meet fire.
It is a confusing diagram of, along with each of the dots is a number next to it. So you can go in within city. Uh, you know, somewhere near Baldi, you can see a twenty-five hundred next to a red dot.
Oh.
That's the fire flow demand that was put on it.
Is he?
Red dot down in the legend then says that, boy, we do that. We're, we're one thousand gallons per minute short of providing the water we need to fight a fire.
Thank you. That clarifies it.
I mentioned that, that's kind of the physical, technical side of it. Later on in the summer, we started, uh, Amanda even came to me because Amanda does all the development review, including receiving requests from Ponderay and Cootney as an example. And she says, Lanning, gosh, give me, you know, what's this blue line? What's the model? Give me a policy. And so we started developing policies related, at least, you know, from just a review standpoint, not to any other operational issues. Uh, what happens when they come in? If they pass the model, they don't pass the model. So we started developing policy. Uh, what if we can't serve them? What if we don't have the ability to serve them? Um, this is where we bumped up against uh, you know, it'd be nice if we had an agreement, you know? Some of these decisions I probably shouldn't be made, making, you know, and have not made without council direction or an agreement, you know, until we kind of solidify some of this. That's why these are, these are evolving over time and that's some of the conclusions here. Um, it had a lot to do with water system expansion, the policy did. Financial, I mentioned the rate study. Uh, we, we uploaded the capital plan, of course, and we developed rates and uh, from that, a major component of that was growth pays for growth. You say, well, how come these projects didn't get developed out there? How do future projects get developed? Well, growth has to pay for growth. He's, you know, and I mentioned that one big project, you know, two and a half million. One developer really has a difficult time, you know, smaller developers can't build these projects and extend the system in a pure growth pace for growth uh, uh, scenario. But it's part of the discussion and we had the discussion back in the rate study as well.
Greg, if I could, just for a second, a good example where we had a really large project um, the last time and we had to tackle the issue of growth paying for growth was the extension of the water service line on North Boyer up to serve the fairgrounds as well as some of the adjacent developments up there. So in that particular case, um, the city passed it L I D um, in order to fund that growth because it was going to take over time for that development to pay for it. So that particular project is a good example of where growth paid for it. It didn't come out of existing ratepayers who are all over town and even outside of the town to serve that area with growth. That was done through an L I V. Um, but again, getting to the point of jurisdictional authority, what Sandpoint doesn't have the ability to do is to enter into an L I D for an area with growth, for example, outside of its city limits because we don't have jurisdictional authority to do that there. Um, and there isn't an agreement providing any authority for that.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. There probably is, there's a, there's probably several financial packages that could be put together to build infrastructure like this, such as a local improvement district. Um, and then there's probably some good private uh, public partnerships as well. You know, if an investor came in and wanted to be reimbursed as an example, you know, short of a L I D. But jurisdictionally, what are we talking about? You know, the three cities, the three private wholesale systems. Um, there's a lot of reference to resolutions and um, water service boundary. Um, and these wholesale agreements. Um, so the, and I've got some slides that follow this, so it may help to answer it. Uh, the, the three cities, of course, operate as one water utility of the services we provide for a resident of Sandpoint are very similar to, are the same as Ponderay and Cootney. Uh, in terms of service connections, water line repairs, these kinds of things, uh, billing, these kinds of things are all the same uh, within the water utility. We have three private wholesale water systems that just get to a meter. And again, I have a pretty nice graphic on this. I hope that's a little more explanatory. Uh, that uh, just get to the meter, we bill at the meter, they then operate their system and pay for everything behind that. There's a lot of reference to two resolutions uh, from two thousand seven and two thousand eleven that it did discuss and establish a water service boundary. And it's the same boundary that we saw in the earlier displays and used in the twenty twenty-one uh, water master plan. Um, but you know, frankly, it just uh, it, it determined a way to grow into that boundary and then um, uh, give them a certain allocation. Uh, they, they call them E D U's or amount of water that can go before you exceed a certain limit. Before then, we come back and discuss more of the boundaries. Uh, they're kind of a merit, very narrow focused approach, quite frankly. Good resolutions and good math and good formulas and process, but did not have an agreement that went with that. You know, for all these other things, you know, an overarching agreement. How do we bill out there? How do we collect money? How do we build capital projects? So there are resolutions and there was a lot of work back in the day. We don't doubt that. We did a lot of research to, to find just that. Likewise, we're not set up as a water district in terms of uh, Likewise, we're not set up as a water district in terms of, uh, state code, you know. And, and if so, a water district has certain abilities and authority and power. So the wholesale agreements, yes, we do have wholesale agreements, Seringa, Northside, Itaway, they're relatively the same. Uh, they agreed to provide water, they, they discuss how we're going to build the water, there's a term, you know, five years, those kinds of things. Uh, it defines very distinctly who owns the water system and who's liable. It talks a little bit about future water use, when, what happens when you exceed your capacity, so it's all good, I mean, it fits into an agreement. And there's a map, you know, that they can, uh, develop within. On the other hand, an inter-jurisdictional agreement might consider. First of all, I, I believe this, I, council would have to really look at an ordinance, I, we have ordinances on the water system already, but there would have to be. Uh, enhanced or a new ordinance related to this particular service. It would recite the Idaho code that enables us to do that, it would refer back to those resolutions. We'd all have, we'd benefit from it. And there you see a whole list of things that could go into an agreement. Rate adoption, bill collection, I've already spoke to, you know, ability to serve and how do we build projects? So on one side, we got this water utility that might function, and then on the other side, we have, you know, a very simple wholesale agreement. Water to this point, to this meter, we bill you for the amount of water that goes through there, you operate the system behind it. The water utility, on the other hand, is full service, it's, uh, it's repair maintenance, it's got rates, it's got a rate structure. And then there's this whole world in between. Where it may not just be all wholesale, it may not just be utility, but it might be a contract for a certain amount of services. We agree to, you know, maintain the system, we agree to bill you, these kinds of things, this in my mind is what we need to develop. And this is what I've learned over the, this was my summer project. Um, you know, and we have the attorney on board, I certainly talked with him several times and we've had discussions. You know, over the months related to this issue on how do we arrive at, um, this relationship on water service in our area? And I think, yeah, that's it, so. Yeah, that's, that's what I mean, there's, there's no conclusion here, I, it just defines or frames. Where I think we need to go, kind of a multi-headed. Uh, approach or any different factors happening out in the water system.
Um, Andy, did you have anything that you wanted to add regarding inter-jurisdictional agreements or? Not to put you on the spot, I just want to make sure that you.
Yeah, thank you, I think Greg's pretty well summarized with the state of, of what has occurred in the past and what. Uh, the council and, and the city needs to consider going into the future. Um, and, and I just emphasize, you know, we don't have a water district as defined by. Um, Title forty-two, Chapter thirty-two of the Idaho Code, that, that's a separate taxing district that would. Uh, benefit particular users, we, we have our own city system, which is, uh, established under Title fifty, the Municipal Corporation Code of the State of Idaho. Um, and we would, I, the city and would need to. Uh, consider agreements with other municipalities, if in fact, you know, we want to tie down some of those items which. Uh, Greg has summarized in his presentation. Um, and that can be done through, uh, the exercise of joint powers agreement or joint agreements with other. Uh, public agencies such as municipalities, and that's provided for under another title of the Idaho Code, so. I think he's pretty accurately summarized the state of where we are. Um, and where we need to go and the things we need to do in order to accomplish those goals, but first and foremost, we have to. We, we've talked a lot around the edges about, you know, what needs to happen, but. Um, we need to make it happen with the other jurisdictions, uh, going into the future.
Thank you, council, any questions?
I, I just have a quick question, are the other jurisdictions amenable?
Are you asking me or Greg?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm asking either or, I'm just, are they amenable to?
I'm going to defer to Greg because I haven't had any direct conversations, I think he has, and I know Jennifer has. Uh, but that's something we need to talk, that's something that needs to be vetted and, and, and worked on, uh, so that we can come up with those agreements.
And I would just add that those conversations have been underway, we've had. Multiple conversations and, and will continue to do so. Um, certainly, Ponderay and Cootney are aware of where we're at and where we're headed. And of the challenges that we face that were outlined for us today, so I'm confident that we can reach an agreement going forward.
Mister Mayor, if I might too, just as an update to council, um, next month, we will be having FCS come back with. Uh, water rates, you recall, we, we approved increase in, in, um, overall rates, but then there was going to be an. Equalization study and some recommendation about, you know, what we're doing amongst the, the various users and so. Uh, that will be coming back to council, your second meeting in January. And we've been waiting to get to the end of the completion of that rate study, um, because it also establishes then specifically. And they were analyzing, uh, what we're charging, for example, for rates across the cities versus what is our rate for wholesale users and. Um, looking at equity with those rates, so there are some recommendations relative to the structure of our rates. Um, as well as some changes needed to get equalization across our different rate structures. That will be coming the second week of January to the council, and then once we've adopted. Um, final rates, that becomes a basis too for getting those incorporated into those agreements, so initial conversations have started, but. That final piece with the rate study will be really important to really getting draft documents before. Um, our various partners in water service.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? All right, Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this moment?
No, Mister Mayor.
All right, that concludes, uh, water system challenges and limitations, thank you, Greg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, happy holidays.
You as well. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a request for approval of the Boyer Meadows subdivision final plat pursuant to city code Title ten, chapter one, chapters one through eight. He, council approved the preliminary plat on September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do you have a presentation for us, or we just, no, okay, does council have any questions for Amy, who's here with us today?
I have a comment, though, um, Amy, did you write this? Yeah, the staff report, I just want to commend you because it was so well-written. I gave it to Keely in my office because she's a novice about all this and she understood every bit of it, so I really wanted to commend you on the writing of it. That it was very understandable, so if someone in the community wanted to understand how this process happens, so that's, that's all I had to say, so thank you very much, it was very well-written.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, council? All right, would the council care to make a motion? Staff report here, I can, I can go along here, bear with me just a moment, so I dig it out here.
Mister Mayor.
Yeah, oh, look at that.
Yeah, you should find.
Thanks. I would entertain a motion to approve. The Boyer Meadows final plat based on the following findings, the final plat is substantially in accordance with an approved preliminary plat. The infrastructure improvements have been completed to city standards. The final plat conforms with all applicable standards of the Sandpoint City Code. The applicable conditions of the approved preliminary plat have been satisfied. And conditions of final plat approval have been provided as presented to ensure that the recorded document clearly represents property conditions, is there a motion?
They moved.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groth? Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
No.
Okay, motion passes, but is approved. The final item on the agenda this evening is a proposed MOU with the City of Ketchum for Sandpoint's participation in lobbyist services for Idaho resort cities. Um, I'll just give you a very brief presentation here, so. A quick update, as you recall, the RCC was initiated last year. Uh, City of Sandpoint was invited to participate, we have nine nineteen participating cities across the state of Idaho. Um, in the first year, we got off to a little bit of a slow start. But you can see the accomplishments that, that we have listed there on the screen. Um, I feel like this year with, we've got, it, it's a better organized group and. Having kind of run through this before, I feel, um, much more clear on what, if you can scroll down slightly, Jennifer. I feel like we have, uh, more focus with our priorities this year, and I'm just going to read these out. Um, so number one, protecting the current resort cities, a local option tax legislation from legislative action. Um, for those of you who are not aware, which I'm sure you are, um, this is, uh, the local option taxing authority is. Um, often scrutinized increasingly by the legislature and there's, there's always a threat that that could be. Changed or even eliminated, and so that has been a concern, um, it's actually been a concern. Such that it's, it's, I, I think the primary reason why Association of Idaho Cities has avoided. Um, really taking any real action on this issue, uh, when the City of Sandpoint initially wanted to. Uh, seek, uh, uh, either, uh, an ex, uh, uh, extension of the ten thousand population cap for resort cities. Or a grandfather clause, if you will, so that we could continue to exercise the local option taxing authority. Uh, we didn't really get any support from Association of Idaho Cities, we were kind of out there on our own. And I think that, that, that really speaks to that, um, general concern, anxiety, maybe even fear that. Um, I think most cities in, in the state of Idaho have regarding, um, the, uh, threat to local option taxing authority in the legislature, so. Um, that, I think that's a really, uh, maybe the most important function for the City of Sandpoint, that. The RCC is, is ready to, uh, ready and willing to kind of take that ba- battle head-on. And make sure that we're protecting that lot, uh, for, uh, not just for the City of Sandpoint, but for the future resort cities, and I know. Uh, number two, protecting the current short-term rental legislation, uh, to ensure no further constraints from legislative action. Um, so again, I'm not sure how familiar all of you are, but, uh, we continue to see challenges to, uh, short-term rental regulation across the state. Um, as you know, uh, City of Sandpoint has, uh, I think, one of the most, uh, progressive and some might say aggressive. Um, uh, regulations in, in the state. Um, and fortunately, uh, that, that legislation, uh, that regulation has, has held, it hasn't been challenged here locally, but. As we see, uh, that, that, those challenges across the state. Um, there's a greater potential that the legislature could take significant action to, um, either. Uh, further remove, uh, municipalities' ability to regulate STRs or, um, or just eliminate. Um, or, or just, you know, significantly hamper our ability to regulate, um, short-term rental housing in our communities. Uh, number three, obtaining more workforce housing funding, um, so. You know, one, one of the many options that we're looking at there is a real estate transfer tax, um. Uh, you know, honestly, I'm not holding my breath on that one, um, but there are other, there, there are a lot of ways that we could, um, see an increase in, uh, budgetary. Uh, funding for workforce housing, uh, for future years, um, this last year was the first time that the state put, provided any. Any funding to the, um, Idaho Housing Fund, uh, Trust Fund, uh, funding it to the tune of fifty million dollars, and that was, uh. Due primarily to the, um, excess ARPA funding that the state had, and, and I think that was a good application of that funding. Um, but we want to continue to provide pressure, um, on the governor's office and the legislature to continue to fund the Idaho Housing Trust Fund. Um, because I, I think we all can agree on how important, uh, supporting workforce housing is in our community. Uh, and then considering a modest liquor license expansion for resort cities, this is something that's come up. Um, again and again, over the years, um, in the legislature, and it hasn't ever. Quite got the traction necessary to, to see any, um, change in legislation, but there continues to be strong interest across the state. Um, and, um, and, uh, RCC is interested in, in continuing to try to find a way. Um, you know, happy medium where we can continue to keep existing, uh, liquor license holders whole. And, uh, and, and, you know, I think at the end of the day, what it really comes down to is you have some cities. Across the state, Driggs comes to mind in particular, um, it's a, it's a fairly small city, but has a, a dramatic. Uh, tourist population in the, in the, uh, throughout the year. Um, and, uh, and they simply don't really have the capacity to benefit from that, uh, for local. Uh, restaurants and, uh, they're, don't really have the, the ability to, um, to, you know, capture. Uh, that revenue and, um, and provide those services that those tourists expect because it's such a small population, and as you know. Uh, the liquor license, uh, number of liquor licenses are based on a population, so. So Driggs has kind of led that fight across the state for a lot of years now, how can we create some more flexibility with liquor licenses? Um, and I think that that would be, uh, an important consideration for, for all, uh, resort cities. Uh, number was, uh, number five, working with ITD to create understanding about transportation initiatives that are important in, to resort cities. Uh, so there's been a lot of talk about roundabouts and, and, um, um, difficulty with some jurisdictions. Getting their, their, um, their concerns or needs addressed, um, with ITD. So that made, that, that rose as a, a top priority for a lot of the resort cities, and then lastly. Exploring ways to keep, uh, resort cities, uh, lot eligible as they approach that ten thousand population cap, so. Um, that separated from the, the first item, you know, we, we want to protect, um, the ability to have a, a. Local option taxing authority for municipalities in Idaho, but. But for Sandpoint specifically, um, I think we're one of two cities that are pushing that ten thousand population threshold. Uh, we will pass that threshold undoubtedly with the next census. And that's really going to put our local option tax, uh, in jeopardy and, and certainly the ability, uh, for us to pass any future local option tax, so. So I think it's critical that we, um, mobilize the RCC, um, if nothing else, that we mobilize the RCC. Uh, to help us, uh, get some traction, uh, in the legislature to, to protect, uh, our local option taxing authority here. So those are the priorities, as we've outlined them this year, um, we've, uh, we've contract, uh, contracted a, a new consultant, which. Uh, we just onboarded here a few weeks ago, uh, we meet on a monthly basis, we have a regular, a monthly call. Um, and we get together at, uh, regular events to, uh, organize events with, um, our legislators and key leadership. Um, in the legislature, um, during events like, uh, Day at the Capitol. And AIC, uh, conference event and, and events like that, so. I think that this is, um, a strong group that's, that's growing and, and becoming more effective, I, I really like where it's going and, and how. Uh, the issues that, that this group is focusing on are really important to Sandpoint. And I think it's, uh, money well spent, so the last thing I'll add, um, it is an increase of, uh, what was asked of the city last year, but we actually ended up getting a freebie last year. Because, um, Ketchum, uh, didn't get their, their, um, their invoice out to us, uh, you know, in, on time. So, uh, they ended up picking up the bill for us last year, so, um, but I would appreciate, uh, the council's, uh. Approval of this resolution. Um, to, uh, continue to engage with, uh, the City of Ketchum and the resort cities of Idaho. Uh, for this effort to, um, see our, our, um, our issues and our priorities. Um, uh, engaged in the legislature. So with that, I will entertain a motion, well, first of all, let me ask, are there any questions?
Yeah, Mister Mayor.
Yeah.
Can you go back? Oh, there, I have it right here, uh, can you explain what real, real estate transfer tax is one funding option? I'm not too familiar with real estate transfer tax.
Yeah, um, so thi- this is just, you know, one of, uh, one option that, that was being considered, um, and what that. Yeah, um, so th- this is just, you know, one of uh, one option that, that was being considered um and what that would be is um if real estate, so it, it would function like uh local option tax, right? So uh, let's say the City of Sandpoint, for example, could uh put a uh ballot uh measure. Could put a, a, a measure on the ballot, and it would give low uh locals the opportunity to pass uh a tax that would be, and it would, it would be a super majority, ju- just like a local option tax. And if uh real estate were to be sold in um within that jurisdiction, then there could be a tax like half a percent, for example. This is something that's been uh used in Colorado specifically to fund uh workforce housing in Colorado. I'm, I'm sure other states have used it as well, but that's, that's where I'm familiar with it from. That made sense. Um, so yeah, I, I um, you know, I spoke, so you know, wh- this last month, we were all charged with uh, meeting with our local uh legislators, eh, all members of the uh Resort Cities Coalition. And um, and speak with our legislators on each of these points and just, you know, might interest you to know. Um, I did sit down with um Sage Dixon in particular. Um, and he was in support of, of each of these uh points um, for, for resort cities. The one that, that he got a little hung up on, however, was the real estate transfer tax. So and and I, you know, that's understandable. Um, um, so I'm, you know, I, I, I'm not, uh, I'm not hopeful that we'll get a lot of traction on that one, but um but like I say, there's, there's a lot of different ways to find uh funding, and it can just be from um, you know, surplus funding, that money that doesn't get spent, spent in the rest of the budget that could be uh put towards uh the Housing Trust Fund. So there's a lot of ways to skin that cat, and this was just one of the, the variety of ways that, that was considered.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jennifer, did you want to add anything?
I don't think I have anything um specific to add to this.
Okay. Um, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this issue?
No, Mister Mayor.
All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for a local memorandum of understanding with the City of Ketchum, Idaho. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.